I'd like to call to order the Thursday, August 1st, 2018 Bowling Green Town Council Meeting. Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We do have a form. At this time, the first item on the agenda is the public hearing for the enhanced speeding fines. The background on this is ordinance number O-2019-004 would be regards to enhancing the speeding penalties on certain residential streets in the town of Bowling Green. The purpose of this ordinance is to implement the enhanced speeding penalties authorized by Code of Virginia 46.2-878.2 for operation of motor vehicle in excess of the maximum speed limit on certain residential streets. The provisions of this ordinance shall apply to Main Street Route 2 slash 301 within the corporate limits of the town of Bowling Green. So at this time, I'd like to open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to comment on this ordinance, please come to the mic and state your name and address. Second call? Third and final call? I'd like to close the public hearing. Counsel, is there a motion to adopt the attached ordinance?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make an agreement to adopt the attached ordinance.
We have a motion by Mr. McDermott and a second by Mr. Wright. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to bring up, it says here, enhanced speeding penalties on certain residential streets. Down the bottom, it says that, down the bottom, it says the provisions of this ordinance shall apply to Main Street. So are we believing this as an open vehicle on streets as well? To me, it should be drawn out of the public hearing.
So I'll explain. I'll explain. So we have been authorized by VDOT that we can do this on Main Street due to the speed study that we did with our signs. We can add other streets to this by ordinance as we do speed studies. So as we can do this, we can add to the ordinance or create new ordinances for those streets.
There won't be an opening to do between the study and the way it's written, it's out like with certain streets, you know, people go over there looking for them.
It's only, that's the only street that we are authorized per this ordinance that we can, at this time, with VDOT's approval, add this additional fine. Okay. All right. Thank you. Any further discussion? Okay. We'll call for a roll call vote. This thing?
Yes.
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 Okay. We have six yeses and one no.
Two no's.
I'm sorry.
Two no's, I said no.
You were the only one that said no. You said yes?
I said yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes. Yes, yes, no, no. Okay. I got you. Okay? Next item on the agenda is the public comments section of our meeting. At this time, anyone from the public is welcome to address counsel in any manner, on any matter that they would like, and just come to the podium and state your name and address.
Hi, my name is Barbara Person. I live in Sparta. And last year, there was a post on Facebook that generated a lot of interest about the town of Person Street, and that's how I got involved. In a very short amount of time, we had a tree decorated, and I can tell you, in my twenty years of experience as a commercial holiday decorator, there was no small feat at all to get it done that quickly. With the help of a lot of volunteers, the tree was cut, lit, and decorated and up on December the 7th. I believe it was well received in town. To my understanding, it had hundreds of lights on Facebook. And I think this personally, in general, it added great deal to the holiday scene and the general town spirit. Whispering Pines donated the tree. They have pledged to continue this donation. You're free to put any tree on the line. I purchased $650 worth of ornaments and ribbon from my former employer last year, which was donated to the tree. All of the ornaments are commercial quality and will last for many years. This year, I'm asking for cons to cover the purchase of the ornament. $225 for a case of LED warm white midlife, which would be 1,200 lights to put on the tree because of commercial quality that are going to last for many, many years. They don't break, and I've been using this particular brand for all my decorating for a number of years. $250 for additional ornamentation, specifically red ornaments that we didn't get last year. Because of the time on them, there was no way that I could get lights, so I opted for red ribbon. And red ribbon doesn't store well, but red ornaments do. Red ornaments will last just like all the other ornaments, when they're in a situation, and then again, ornaments will last for maybe five to 15 years. And then $150 for ribbon. The top of the tree gets a bow, but just that ribbon does not smell well, but that would be the only annual attempt to the town for a number of years. And I'm requesting it now because of the time on them, vendors that I go with typically run out of things by August. And if we order now, I can almost guarantee I can get the red ornamentation that I think would enhance the tree. So basically, I'm adding for about $650. To put up the tree, to decorate it, to take it down, to cut it, put the tree, to dispose of the tree, to pack it, all the ornaments up, is at no expense to the town. Volunteers did that last year, and I'm sure that volunteers will continue to do that for sure. And hopefully, we'll get even more people involved.
Thank you. Counsel, what's your pleasure on the suggestion or the foot? Is this something that Counsel would like to explore? Do? Do you have money in the budget to use for those funds?
Would you have a contingency on that?
Well, I know, last year, we did a big spark through the town, and we never come up with, discussed decorations, you know, across the bar, and I think the lights for it also. I mean, it's something that we haven't had in town, and it did spruce up a lot. It kind of helped with the parade. Most towns you go through, you see decorations, you see trees, and we hadn't had one in a while, and it got taken down from the judge in the courthouse four hours long. I know, I'd like to see it to continue, like to see it be built on, not necessarily always from town funds, but I think the town should invest some money into seeing that the people in town are enjoying and will show off their spirits to visitors that come in and pass through their area.
Just confirming that, I guess, if we spend these funds, the ornaments and lights could be stored here at the town? Or you would assure that they're stored properly?
I just have a quick question. So, Barbara, thanks for your comments. Last year was, really, really wasn't. So, is this done by yourself, formed by a committee, people around the town, or is this something that falls under Jill and Joelsa's purview?
Last year, to my knowledge, it was a Facebook post and a group from there, and it was just a group of citizens. I guess it would be something that maybe Joelsa could just, not necessarily coordinate, but oversee the volunteers' sake. You know, if they needed a point of contact for Joelsa, I don't want any of that to be used to her.
I agree.
She could at least be the point of contact on the town if she would be willing to, or Mr. Beck would be willing to, I think.
We also have the affiliate Bowling Green Virginia Main Street program in effect now as well. So that's something that we plan on trying to build on as well, add on to this. It's just not going to be a single item. And that's something that we can hopefully develop for.
Is there...
Yeah, I just want to say, okay. Yeah, Barbara, thank you for taking us on. I mean, I heard a lot of good stuff about it last year, and I would just say, you know, give her support, and are you the actual point of contact for this project at this point?
For you.
Okay, good. So, you know, we should give her the support, and whoever, you know, if we want to root this in with, like I said, let Joelsa be a point of contact if she needs help, and we'll see whatever it is that you need, and I'm certainly supporting with this project too. And I know, you personally have know that you will take care of whatever. Yeah, and thank you for last year, it sounds like you've put a lot of money into it yourself, so good thing.
Yeah. Anytime we can have volunteers step up for expenses, welcome.
Yeah, I think that's great. The only reason I mention is I just feel if the town is going to be expending some funds for this, it should have some kind of connection, collaboration, or something, just so everything is focused on.
Yeah, but we, you know, purple or pink tree doesn't just show up in town, and that would be something, and I don't believe it would, but just, you know, we have somebody that can be yes or no, or we may maybe need to think about it here. So is there a motion to approve the expenditures? That motion by Mr. Wright?
A second.
Second by Mr. Paul. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed? Motion passed. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So just work with Reese or Melissa or Joelsa on coordination and how we want to handle these and get them over. Thank you. Okay, is there anyone else that would like to address counsel during the public comments section? CMN, we'll move on to staff reports. Before we get to staff reports, we're going to add the field training policy of the new business. Also, we're going to be adding, on your desk, there's a field policy that we need to get approved for, that's been a directive from DCJ?
DCJ, yes.
DCJ, yes. But we'll get to that in the new business regarding the police training. Is there any questions on the police report? Police chief's report? So we had three more, do you guys?
It was actually four. There was another one picked up Saturday afternoon. What town brings this?
The three here are before 11 o'clock.
During the week or weekends?
During the week. You know, one Saturday, about 11 o'clock, Saturday night.
That's concerning.
Since I'm on, I've been on Main Street more and more lately, I see we get a lot of fast feeders coming through, you know, coming through town, you all having to chase them down. Where do they think they're going? What can their excuses be?
They are around the court, so we just redirect them. Well, luckily, we'll now get these additional fine signs put up as soon as possible.
We have some self-inflicted speed bumps in the south of the town right now, so.
So, what is the process of the addition of the enhanced speeding signs?
I believe it's just we, I believe we just contact VDOT, to my knowledge, and sure, then they get the signs produced, and it's not at expense to the town, I don't believe. But on that note, Melissa has a meeting tomorrow morning, a informational meeting on the paving of the town. I'll give her a very clear answer.
Yes, see how many they're going to put up, Melissa?
I know it would be at least one at each end of town.
Yeah.
For sure. And if they get those up, soon enough.
That would be good, too.
Yep. Thank you for your input. Next item on the agenda is our public works report. Are there any questions from Bill? Remember, slowly come into the end of our sewer project because I heard that VDOT paved this area, so.
Yeah, probably about a month or so.
There's still a month to go?
Well, right, now that they're towards the end, it's getting real tedious. They're at their deepest point, and it's right there on Milford. So, you know, you've got the traffic, you've got the overhead lines.
When will they be done with Maury?
Two weeks. It's the same thing there, it's just we got like, I think it's seven more laterists to do, so.
Well, Bill, I assume they're going to do a nice paving on the look they've done, and then VDOT's going to kind of pave over top of that, is that correct?
You know, I know Kelvin's going to have a asphalt company come in and do, you know, Maury right there. They were talking about just doing pieces of it, but the road's so disarrayed that they're going to have to do it all.
So Main Street and Milford, Kelvin's going to have to do more because they're actually building, they're going to mill that and rebuild it, so.
So we're going to get credit from Kelvin for them not having to finish it up?
Yes, that's, that was part of the, when we bid it out, we didn't include paving in the bid because we had worked out the deal. But they do have funds in there to do a base paving on Maury, which then at some point in early September will be slurry paved.
Bill, are we done? Are we finished having our contingency? Do we have a block on contingency?
I'm pretty much out there, I'm not, I haven't kept up with the money.
Yeah, we haven't dipped into the additional contingency that we're just dealing with.
How much was that received, Paul?
$100,000.
Additional that we had in there?
Right.
Over the 180 that we spent before?
Unbalanced in the contingency. They appropriated the additional $100,000 that we had not used. Actually, we had a credit back. We have to see how things work out. We'll get a credit at the end of here on the paving on Milford Street because they won't have to go and do as much paving because of companies coming in. So we're okay in the budget, and actually, we're putting in a change order because we have a problem that's occurred on the sewer line over on Davis Court, which you must deal with. We're going to be doing it shortly, and it'll allow us to use some of that money for that.
They've taken money from that fund to use over there to put it in the project?
Yeah, because it's a sewer maintenance replacement project.
And there were two, were there two weeks in Bowling Green Meadows?
I think it was two in Bowling Green Meadows, and they had one along the street in fact.
And just to update everybody on the quick paving discussions, Melissa's attending the informational meeting tomorrow, VDOT has approved, is putting together a flyer to talk about that slurry coating that we talked about a few months ago. They'll come in, do something, be a couple weeks, and then come back and do the last treatment process of it. And just a reminder that Brontis, Main, and Milford, and Chase are all getting milled and asphalted back. The rest of the town will get the slurry paved. But we have an informational meeting for the public on Monday evening, and you may see flyers starting to be distributed tomorrow after lunch, and the message board signs are in place, and they should be lit also. So we will have more information tomorrow that we hopefully will start sharing on our social media and our Facebook page on our website, along with the flyers going out, and then we have the informational meeting. You may see deployment Tuesday.
It's this Monday night?
Monday night, the 6th, the 5th.
Here.
The 5th, that's 6:00 PM.
6:30.
6:30 here.
It's tab 10. Tab 10. Now, is there any provisions? I know I mentioned, you talked a little bit about bike lanes, because they're, I guess they'll, I mean, where does that fall in? Because I really think we should receive that.
That's going to be, we have to wait for the next smart scale opening window, which is, I don't know how often they open it, but it's not every year, it's every two years. So we have to wait for them to open the smart scale projects up again.
Okay, it's a smart scale.
Then that's when we would, we would submit that.
So you just say all of Maury Avenue will be resurfaced? Or just part of it?
The construction section will be of asphalt, a temporary asphalt, a cap of an asphalt, and then the, all of Maury will be slurry on top of that.
Please do ask.
Everything. And, yeah, and when they, when I say this temporary, it's going to be smoother than Main Street because it's got to be for the slurry to be nice. The only reason Main Street and Milford's so rough is it was no point in spending extra money on crews doing it smooth when we're just going to cut it up.
Yeah, so I think the VDOT's going to do the sidewalks.
They're going to work on sidewalks.
And they're going to put in a new, well, Kelvin's going to put in a new apron, too, right near where it goes for Maury to transit traffic to Main.
And Kelvin's guy assumes they're going to make sure the doors through that he's been through, they're using, all that'll be cleaned up as soon as possible.
You're probably, VDOT's going to do the sidewalks of Maury Street, do you know what they're going to do?
They had someone out there about a week ago that was out there taking notes and looking at it, and I'm not for sure when, but it will be done.
I didn't object on that. I'm on the committee. I've talked to VDOT, I've been following up with them. They are going to do $50,000 worth repairs on Maury for us, and they'll do that in conjunction with Main Street.
Because those repairs are only for sidewalks?
Yes.
Because it's not on the west side.
Correct.
So once the sidewalks are done, will people not park on them and park on the right side of the street?
We will make sure that we enforce that with their police chief. Which, which a few years ago, we actually went through and put out flyers on vehicles that were parked on as a warning and gave them like a two-week town brain to correct that, and we'll go through that. But I, we definitely need to enforce that. If they're spending $50,000 of our tax pay, they need to make sure we take care of them.
I think the issue there, we may be, they may be looking at, it's going to be narrow that down, everybody parks on the appropriate side of the sidewalk, the streets are going to, the streets are going to be a little bit closer, because the parks are going to be where they're supposed to be, and it's a very narrow street. But be very careful with pedestrians and also, you know, traffic going through there.
Maury? Thank you. Next item is our economic development and best coordinator.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, thank you all for having me tonight. You'll notice my report in your packet. Been doing some good work with the EDA, talking about various ways of marketing the commercial corridor and, and Main Street here in town, tapping into the opportunities and designation. We've updated some documents, and I'm enjoying my role with the EDA and enjoying being more active with that group, and excited to explore different job duties as it comes outside of just even planning and coordinating. So that's going very well at this time, instead of Linda and Jane can probably speak to that more. Musical in Green kicks off tomorrow night, and I'm really excited about it. We have a new band that no one's ever seen before, Kristy Cream and the Sugar Daddies. Sure is a fun name, so I hope their performance is as fun as the name, but I have seen them before, scouted them in, actually, the late winter. So I'm very excited about their performance. The weather looks to be about 25 to 30 percent chance of potential rain. I made the decision today to keep the, to keep the event on the courthouse lawn. Obviously, I'll be monitoring the weather hourly forecast frequently tomorrow, and if that needs to change, you should see that on, on Facebook and everywhere that I can think to post it. But as of now, it's on the courthouse lawn. I encourage you all to please come out and support this event, especially since it's the first one. Really want to set the tone that, that our leaders are involved here and get everyone out. I would also encourage you to just word of mouth, just tell your friends, not just in town, but folks that live outside of town, folks that live in Ladysmith and outside of Caroline County. We'd really love to capture some of that population that's not just here. It is a lovely community event for our Bowling Green residents, but we'd love to showcase our town to folks outside of Bowling Green. Additionally, I've been working hard on Harvest Festival. I can't believe it's already August. I mean, I feel like the summer just went by so quickly. We do have sponsorship solicitations out to the, all of the folks that have sponsored in the past, just kind of waiting to hear back on those, and I'll keep you all updated as we get sponsorships. Also encourage you to follow our Facebook page, that's when we'll be announcing, you know, as they come in. Kind of an exciting thing that I did last month was attended the Virginia Main Street Downtown Intersection Conference in Lynchburg at one of their lovely new hotels, The Virginian. I did not stay there, but the conference was held there, and it was beautiful. It was a really great seminar, a great conference, lots of different workshops, great networking opportunities. I met a lot of folks with the state, a lot of folks from other municipalities with similar location, or similar populations as Bowling Green. Had lunch with a group of Virginia Main Street affiliates from Cape Charles, Virginia, which was really lovely, and even though they had, they have a population of 1,200, it was a very similar population. Something that's not so similar is that they do have a water attraction and a tourist, they're a tourist area, so that is something that's different. But since they joined the Virginia Main Street program as affiliate in one year, last year they joined, and in one year, they saw 14 new businesses open in their town. So additionally, I've been working with our Bowling Green Main Street group, and we're working directly with Anne Glaub, who spoke at the last town council meeting. She's incredible, and she's going to be a tremendous resource to us, to guide us in the right direction. One of the most encouraging things that I can tell you all tonight is how reassuring she is. She continuously tells me, Joelsa, you are going to see things happening in Bowling Green. You will. She has no doubt. So with the Virginia Main Street program, we are starting a new program that you all agreed to, or accepted a resolution at the last meeting for Community Heart and Soul. So we're kicking off that program, and you're going to see a booth tomorrow night at the Musical in Green that Councilman Gaines, Mark Gaines, is going to be kind of heading up, as well as some business folks in town will be there. We'll have a sign up sheet for people to come and sign up, give us their email. We're also going to have some, some fillable forms. We're also gonna have some, um, some fillable forms, uh, what do you love about Bowling Green? You know, so the idea behind any one soul in terms of phase one is really to just develop a sense of, uh, trust in our town and in our leadership here and also to get everyone involved, get everyone's story. Everyone's story matters. Everyone's opinion matters. Everyone's feedback matters. And so with this program, we're really trying to, uh, make folks understand that we care and that we're listening. So again, I encourage you to come out, um, check out the Community Heart and Soul booth, um, see what we're doing and, um, and I'm really looking forward to moving forward and working with our Bowling Green Main Street group on that. Um, we also had a meeting recently, uh, with the Bowling Green Main Street group and it was very productive and just, it was just really an opportunity for me to update folks on the Downtown Intersection Conference that we went to. Um, that is all I have and I'm happy to accept any questions that you all may have.
We also, we got the, uh, Community Heart and Soul is having their first community meeting here, September twelfth at six thirty. We'll be here at the town hall. Uh, and that is one that we will be inviting the whole community, uh, the whole town, uh, as many people as we want to show up. Uh, so this is one of the ways that it will be, they will be jump starting off in the first phase of the Heart and Soul program.
I do tell you all that the state, uh, D H C D, as well as, uh, folks from, that have worked directly with Virginia Main Street and with the Work Foundation who, uh, runs the Community Heart and Soul program, Bowling Green's on, on their radar. So if we don't succeed, they don't succeed. Um, so I'm, I'm very encouraged by that and I, I feel a good sense of momentum and enthusiasm with the teams that we're working with. Um, thank you for mentioning the community, uh, meeting. Uh, that slipped my mind, so I appreciate that. Lastly, I will let you all know, one of our heads up items, I've included the upcoming events, uh, for the remainder of the year. Um, and I just wanted to point out that National Night Out is on August sixth. You may have seen the signage around town and we just wanna encourage our leadership to come out to that as well.
Thank you.
I had, I'm sorry, I had one question and one, uh, down here under the wine festivals, you had an insurance claim for property damage. What was that about?
So I've been dealing with insurance adjusters. I actually just put it to bed, uh, two days ago. Uh, so the furniture company that we rent furniture from, we, we rent from two different vendors. One is for kind of your standard rental items that you would need for an event, cocktail tables, linens, things like that. And then we also work with a specialty company, have a Richmond called Paisley and Jate and worked with them, had a good relationship with them for the last three years. Um, you all may remember the rainy, uh, week that we experienced after, that weekend, right after the wine festival and into the week. So the ground was incredibly wet and rather than the company calling me and covering themselves and allowing me to make the call, they chose to, or made the decision to go ahead and drive onto, um, the Old Mansion property, um, and in, to get to, to get their furniture eluded. Um, had I been given the call, I probably would've told them to just park on the pavement whom circle and physically manually walk the furniture to their truck. It wasn't that far of a distance. But a fair amount of damage was done to their, um, to their grounds, uh, including some of the cedar trees there and some, which is, you can't, you can't replace that stuff as well as, uh, they ran over some of the underground lighting that the owners had, had spent a fair amount. Um, anyway, I've been dealing with the, I dealt with the furniture company, um, rather pointedly and explained that this needed to be an, a claim under their insurance and so I've been dealing with adjusters for the last month. And, um, the, the insurance company has agreed to reimburse the owners for the lighting, uh, as well as the cedar tree, maintenance of the cedar trees, refertilization of all the cedar trees. Um, and as well as our time and labor with our Public Works Department, we did some work as well, um, doing, just doing some, uh, reseeding and laying some straw and that sort of thing. We'll be reimbursed fully for that and the owners will be as well. Everybody's happy at the end of the day. I don't know what it means for our relationship moving forward with Paisley and Jate.
Well, I have somebody else in Fredericksburg who'll give you her name afterwards.
Thank you.
Um, also too, Adrian Davis is a local here that she does that Whiskey Revival and she was just named two thousand nineteen Thunder Rising Star. I was wondering if maybe you could get her to do a guest appearance at one of the Music on the Greens or something.
If she would like to reach out to me and be happy to speak with her and see if we could.
So we can recognize the local and.
See if we could look out. It's a little, it's a little late in the stage of game. We do, we don't wanna take away performance time from people that we've already made arrangements with.
Just like maybe intervention or something like that?
But yeah, sure. And I'm, of course, I'm happy to speak with her. If you'd like to pass it on, I don't have the contact information, but yeah, pass it on, give her mine and I'm happy to speak there.
Okay, thank you, Joelsa.
Sure. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is Town clerk treasurer's monthly report. Are there any questions or do you have any comments?
I've got one question. Looking on the internet, Melissa, under the E D A and Planning Commission, uh, I don't see any minutes from, starting from March four. Are we gonna get, is there a minute for these meetings or not or?
A minute for E D A, I've got by Joelsa and the Planning Commissioner, Bonnie Reese.
Okay. I guess see if I get, tonight is the last minutes on there from March and we're already in August.
As in regard to the Planning Commission, I think the last meeting that was official was in April. I need to publish them. They approved them. The other ones, we didn't have a forum. So I am gonna post something up there that says, you know, you know.
And if I may speak to the E D A's minutes, if you go to the website and go to the packet from the previous meeting, that will always have the minutes from the previous month. Um, I'm still therefore learning curve. I'll be very candid for me in terms of between publishing the packet and the agenda and the minutes. So I know how to do the whole packet with the minutes in it because I'm still learning how to just post the minutes, if that makes sense. But they are available. If you, if you go and just access the packet, the minutes are online. Sure. I'm sure Reese will help me out first thing in the morning getting those posted right away.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is the town manager's monthly report. Are there any questions of the town manager? Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'd like to have motion, Mr. Mayor, we accept the agenda as is.
Okay, is there a second? Second, a motion by Mr. Gaines, second by Mrs. Gaines. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Just, I wanna get through new business and then I have a slight, not family emergency, but a close relative emergency that I may have to excuse myself. Um, but I would also like to see if we can move the closed session and we would be okay moving that to the next meeting or do, is that something Reese, we need to work to address that? Cause I would like to be here for that discussion. Okay. So actually, before we start on the new business, actually, we'll get through that since it's something new on the agenda, then we'll go through that. Okay, we're good. Okay, well, then I guess at this time I'll hand the meeting over to the vice mayor. Um, and we'll go through there and that was the right. Apologize and I will see all my students.
Uh, the next item on the agenda is talking about the C G S training. She, you come up and explain a little bit.
Yes. Earlier this week, I got an email after the delivery of the documents before you.
It turned my media.
That that evening, I got an email from domain Dave Hughes at C G S requesting all of our, um, training references, paying to firearms and field training. Now, just to be clear, we haven't had to complete any field training because all of our offerings were recertified. But, uh, he wants a copy of our field training policy, the old policy that was adopted in nineteen sixty, we had a field training policy. It wasn't a requirement then and what you had before tonight is, uh, has been, uh, reviewed by Ms. Coroll and the town attorney.
And so the request is, uh?
The policy?
Yes.
So is there a motion to adopt the policy that's presented before us?
I'll make that motion there, Mr. Mayor.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, I appreciate that. All right, it's, uh, the question for the mayor, a second. Uh, call for question, any questions on the policy? Questions? Call for the vote. All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed?
Thank you. Thank you all so much.
Next item of business is, uh, the Board of Council Committees and Members of the Mayor's Budget Personnel.
Mr. Mayor, uh, back in the chair. Um, that was not reviewed by the Personnel Committee. This was put on the agenda out of the question of the mayor and actually, uh, because it was brought up by, uh, the Councilman, uh, like last meeting for Gaines.
Do you, do you just want me to?
I was gonna ask Tom Dragan, if you could.
Okay.
So, um, we are required to follow the rulings of the Fourth Circuit Court of Appeals and the United States Supreme Court. And there are two opinions in the Fourth Circuit that prohibit council members, elected officials, from delivering a prayer at the beginning of a meeting. And so if there is a desire to have a prayer, you can do it, but the way to do it would be to get local clergy or, you know, clergy is the Protestant word, but local religious leaders, I guess, to, um, come and offer a prayer at the beginning of the meeting. Um, and it's supposed to rotate so that, so that there's diversity and I think I was told that we would get, you know, a bunch of different Baptist ministers, which is fine, but the intent is to allow, um, all types of religious leaders if they want to to offer a prayer.
So would that be by our invitation or would that be in the form of volunteer giving?
Either one. Usually there's somebody on staff that has to coordinate and make sure that that person shows up and kind of reminds them to do it.
So do we need, do anything to reinstate that or just follow that policy?
No, you could just give a consensus and direction to the town manager in terms of initiating that.
Okay, so consensus on council, then we reinitiate that and outside clergy?
Yeah, I mean, I agree with that, but we voted last year to get rid of it and so was that for the same reason that I don't remember why, well, we took a vote last year to do away with, with the daily, with their prayer for the meeting. So is that vote gonna be in effect then?
I don't think that.
I mean, how was, how was that? What was that about?
Well, we're not gonna do that. We're actually have someone in the book.
Right, right. What I'm saying, I understand it now because we, we can't do it, but we can coordinate it and that's, and that's fine and damn, that's what I want. I like to see it back here because it's, you go everywhere else and you do it. Uh, I don't think it was explained that way last year about it because I don't remember that. So I just wanna make sure that what we said last year wouldn't, won't be affected by this.
Correct. Yeah, you're, you're fine.
Yeah, the laws of general law.
Um, I, I kinda like, I, I feel like I need a little more background history on this. I mean.
When I, um, first started representing, um, the town, um, members of council would offer a prayer and, um, and then there were decisions that were handed down by the Fourth Circuit specifically saying that that is not permissible under the Constitution. So that's the issue the council.
And I guess my, my own question is, so if you guys wanted to this because you feel like it's done in every, in every other sector and it's kind of saying, I mean, I, I am a Christian, but I kind of, I mean, time is always a big thing and I kind of wonder, do you wanna say a prayer to yourself? If you can do that, I don't know. How do we understand, why is that part of protocol in this kind of the meeting?
So it's, um, probably as much tradition as everything else in the community and we are, you know, Christian based community and for, um, for someone to say a prayer offers things in the properly and, um, you, you have to read it back and, you know, you do that yourself if you like, but, um, just sets a really good precedent for the meaningful no obligation. Somebody's saying, you should say amen or whatever that is, uh, you know, it's just very simple, the public, uh, meeting itself and be that in the hallway and, uh, Christian fashion. Okay, well.
Right.
Any comments there?
And it can even be a non, a non, a non meeting.
Sure.
It doesn't have to be.
Correct.
So, you know, that's the thing that, but.
Yes.
You're right. It's just been tradition and tradition everywhere else, uh, you know, and I guess it's what it's always based on, it's just tradition and closeness, you know, within the community.
So I just have a question. So last year, people sitting on this town council voted to not do this.
For council?
To not do it, is that right?
Yeah, for council members.
Council members, right. Now you're not gonna vote to do it, you're just gonna do it.
No, we're gonna, the council is not gonna have any participation. It's gonna be an individual, so we're not.
And who's gonna make those selections?
Well, that's what we just talked about. We can reach out for volunteers, um, and somebody's gonna have to coordinate who's coming and somebody, and make sure that you're on, on time if they're gonna do that.
And where would you get the volunteers from?
Neither.
Community as in Bowling Green only, outside the community?
I don't think there's any difference.
Because I don't know of any Catholic church here in Bowling Green. I don't know of any synagogue. Would you wanna have some kind of diversity? I mean, I could be open to that. And I'm not saying my prayers. I just, I'm on the same level, I guess, with Deborah. I've been to the Planning Commissions in Frederickburg several times and I've never heard them do an invocation. I'm Catholic, I do my own prayers, I go to church, but as far as I think this is a business meeting, um, for the town, not everybody in the town thinks it's tradition to say so is presumptuous. Um, so I'm just trying to get a handle on it, why being a tradition makes it right.
That's what we did, that we switched, we and Glenn, and we, at every council, if they, if, if, if he was gonna die, I'll, I'll do it. And if I'm dying, I'll, I'll go much as two weeks. Glenn's not here, but that, nobody.
Right, the mayor asked us.
The mayor asked us.
So there's no issue with, now that we're not doing that? So there's no issue with, now that we're not doing that, it doesn't create an issue. But, you know, if, if someone in the town wants to come and say a prayer for the meeting, that's fine. I don't have an issue with that. You know, if do want to advertise a sign up for, come and pray for us, no, I don't want to do it, but if somebody wants to come, if it's known, they will open up the prayer and stuff, I mean, Congress opened up the prayer, the script board opened up the prayer, why not we?
I have a suggestion. Our chief police, chief police, the pastor.
No.
He can't do either?
No, that's not-
Yeah.
He's, he's here in his capacity as the chief of police. Oh, so it's not only council, it's any class? I, I just, my approach on constitutional issues is to err on the side of caution. You know, if you wanted to do that, felt strongly about it, you certainly, I guess, could do that, but I, I would not recommend it.
So one of the staples of law enforcement is obviously community outreach. Obviously, I would have various strong opinions on one side, being about, about officials. So my background is in that before, it was a law enforcement. So to kind of put this issue bare, the basis, I'm not here to preach to you, right, but the basis of Christianity is love. So if we, if we look at this from a factor of love, and basically, that's what we're saying in a prayer, regardless of what denomination. But to further that, law enforcement historically in the past has used chaplains and chapel programs to solidify community outreach. I am a law enforcement chaplain. I have done invocations and meditations in that capacity, but I would agree with ungrateful things. I had no problem getting reserved if somebody didn't show up. There's a thing called separation of church and state. A lot of people would say that's to keep the church out of government. Basically, that's kind of reversed, is to keep government out of church. So this, this conversation could quite possibly be going all night with different ideas. Again, if you need a backup plan here for you, it should be better suited to find, okay, and there's one here, there's a Catholic church in Smithville, there's a synagogue, there's, there's Rabbi DeSova, they're seeing a kiyon, so there are different classes here.
I think the important thing is too, as we start trying to build this meeting, the Heart and Soul Program that we're looking at, really works itself on bringing the community together. And, you know, a small prayer and a council meeting, not a negative thing, is an opportunity to just to say some good words over things. Typically, we just ask for, you know, very, very focused and respectful language in the meetings, so not to create any kind of religious invitations at all, which is more common to the community and the community, you know, appreciate what you're going to do this with the Heart and Soul, good stuff. So next, again, is the, the will of the council to allow someone to say a prayer at council meetings? Ms. Gaines?
I'm not sure if yes.
Thank you. No? First? Okay. Thank you.
Yes. No.
Okay. So some of the councils will allow someone to come to their room. Thank you, appreciate that.
Mr. Vice Mayor, since there were council members who voted against it, perhaps at the next meeting, there could be a vote for defining the parameters of who might be asking, how those people would be solicited. I think I'm-
Would you like to draft that proposal up?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. No problem with what you do, Dan, no problem. All right, any other things on that particular topic? Next one would be tilting streets, sidewalks, Bowling Green Brown, traffic calming measures, any discussion in regards to that?
I'll defer to the chairhead on that, Mr. Wright.
Is there any discussion on that?
The last meeting, we didn't have nobody else, so that's more to count.
No report, Eric? Edward, no report of you?
Oh, yeah, I was making sure around myself, but I don't, I don't have a vacation.
Okay. Ms. Davis?
The EDA has met several times, but we went into closed session. There's good things going on. And also, I would like to say, I don't know if all of you heard, but Joel Saka, when she went to this meeting in Lynchburg, she did not stay in the hotel at our expense. She stayed with a friend, and I commend her for that.
Thank you. Mark, any other committee reports for you?
I just thought about something, and now I lost it. We, well, we're going closed session, so we'll just put that off. I think y'all did see the closed session, it's new contract, so just go over that, and we'll discuss that in this meeting.
All right. Valerie?
Planning Commission did meet. We just reviewed briefly comprehensive plan portion that we've all reviewed. We're going to continue forward with the rest of it, and we did meet with, or did attend the EDA meeting to, in regards to the mapping situation with the town.
Right. Not bring up a little bit more the EDA meeting, we did, the EDA did appoint two members to meet with the Planning Commission, talk about the planning, the overall master plan, I guess, we're looking after for that. So what?
Future.
Future decline?
Future use map.
Future use map. So they did appoint two folks to meet with Valerie Herting there. Additionally, we had the meeting with their new EDA member, Donovan Cutler. Very good meeting, very good input. We really appreciate them being there. And we talked a lot about the Heart and Soul project that's coming up, and some different directions and some things that we're going to take on the EDA, so stay tuned, we'll keep you informed. All right?
I did know one thing with the EDA, looking through the minutes, y'all were looking at Cobblestone.
Correct.
Once you're looking at Cobblestone, is it motel or franchise or something?
The mayor had sent, I mean, the Town Manager had sent some information on Cobblestone.
Okay. And that's all we've just, you know, done on that so far? Just looked over that and then we talked and discussed-
There's some activity going on there that we were talking about one week.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yeah, okay. Any other committee reports? Any other information? Any other new business? Is there a motion to close? All right, we have a motion to close, a second?
Second.
Ms. Davis, all in favor? Stand up and lead. All right.